I'm going to call this meeting the Stanley County Board of Commissioners Regular Meeting for March 15th to order, and I do welcome those in attendance. Good crowd, glad you're here. And shortly, we're going to do public comments, and I know some of you are here to comment about what was on the agenda, which was a rezoning issue off of River Road in Stanfield. That item has been pulled, but you are more than welcome to make public comments when we get to that particular portion of this meeting. At this time, though, I would like to recognize Commissioner Allman, who's going to do our invocation and pledge of allegiance. Commissioner?
Let's pray. Father God, thank you for the good day we've had, Lord. Thank you for our great citizens who are here tonight, and thank you for our county and all our EMS workers, our sheriff's deputies, and all our county employees, and all those who are working hard to fight the COVID epidemic. God, I just lift them up to you. Father, I pray for my fellow commissioners and ask that we make wise decisions and decisions that will glorify you. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Allman. At this time, I would like to ask our Board of Commissioners to make adjustments or either approve the agenda as it's presented.
Commissioner, Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we remove Item 6, the Burleson Square rezoning, and move the other items up the agenda accordingly.
Okay. We have a motion to remove the zoning request for Burleson Square LLC, which was a request by Mr. Burleson, and all the other items below that would be moved up in appropriate order. Is there a second?
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
A second by Commissioner Effer. Any discussion? All in favor of this motion and the adjusted agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Let's see, public comments. I'm going to ask Rhonda Benton to come forward.
Okay, can I hear?
Yes, please. And I ask anyone that speaks tonight to please try to keep your comments to three minutes or less.
I'll do my best.
Thank you.
Thank you all for seeing me. I know most of you are at least, okay, wow, I'm usually loud enough, people don't need me to use a microphone. It's kind of weird. So I'll try to keep it nice and sweet. I am here about the Stanfield rezoning. I know it's been taken off the agenda for tonight, but I plan to be here every meeting to have this conversation, because at our last Stanfield Commissioners' meeting, we were basically told it didn't matter what the community wanted, they did what they wanted to do for their hunting buddy. Yeah, I can tell you all about it. But I could tell you all about the environmental issues, I could tell you about the safety issues, but the reality is, this isn't the kind of growth Stanley County wants, and it's definitely not the kind of growth Stanfield wants. We don't have the resources for this high-density community, and he keeps wanting to rezone them. I don't have a problem with somebody purchasing land and doing with it what they want. He's out to make money, I don't begrudge him that, okay? If I had the money to buy the land to prevent it, I would. I don't. However, we do have the opportunity to stop him from rezoning and putting more homes on there than what we have deemed reasonable previously. Should we re-look at our land use? Absolutely, and we probably should not make it as small as it currently is. We definitely should not make it smaller, and that is my concern. We are not supposed to be doing things to help somebody make money, we're supposed to do things to help our community be better, right? And that's what we all want, is to make Stanley County better. We want jobs, absolutely. We want new people, absolutely. We want it to be done correctly, and the way this is going to be done is not the correct way, and it's not the way people of Stanfield want. And we really want you guys to hear us and hear us well, because we're going to keep talking about it until somebody listens, okay? Thank you all.
I'd like to recognize Ken Tucker.
I was here to talk about the Burleson developments, because I live right across the street from it, across River Road, and I talked with most of you guys on the phone a couple of weeks ago, and got, kind of felt pretty good about the vote tonight, but I guess I got some questions, and all I got left tonight, because it's been canceled. One is, are there any ramifications for someone pulling their request to rezone once they've made the request?
I guess he could present it at another meeting.
Okay, I guess what I'm asking is that a lot of taxpayer dollars were spent in putting signs up, moving the sign, changing dates on the sign, removing the sign, along with all the letters that went out from the county office, along with admin reason or purpose, all the business they had to do to get those letters issued. It would seem to me like there should be some kind of regulation or a rule that says if you pull it, there's some kind of a fee that you have to pay, along with some kind of a time limitation before you can ask to be rezoned again, because I've got a strong suspicion what happened was he realized he didn't have the votes, and he pulled it. Now, I can't answer that, I'm just speculating, but I suspect there was some polling going on, and he realized he didn't have the votes, he pulled it. Taxpayers have paid money for all the signage and the letters going out, and there's no consequences. If he comes back next month and says, "I want to try it again," then the month after that, you've got the community kind of stirred up, you've got all of us stirred up, the property owners around there, and there's no consequences for a developer just to say, "Ah, I'll try it sometime later." I'm asking for you guys, you should put some kind of an agenda item to vote on some kind of ramifications that if someone pulls a zoning request after it's been made, that there is both a financial fee associated with that and some kind of a time stipulation that says you cannot ask for that land to be rezoned within a certain amount of time. My thinking is it ought to be somewhere around $4,000 or $5,000 for these developers, that if they put it out there, because of the taxpayer money that's been laid out, along with about a five-year delay in having to ask for that land to be rezoned again. That's what I want to ask for tonight. Mr. Chairman, I don't know how that goes about, I don't know what your rules and regulations are, but I'd like to see that as an agenda item in the future, that when a zoning request has been pulled, that there's some type of a criteria that says, "Here are the ramifications for having put the taxpayers through the extra taxes that they pay in to make, get the signs made up, get them put out there, letters going out." We should be compensated for that, rather than just being left high and dry. That's all I got. Thank you.
Okay, and I'm not, if you're in public comments, you know, we're not supposed to answer questions, but I think Bob Rimsburg, our zoning officer's here, and you ask a question about do we charge? I have no idea. I don't, I don't know, but I'm going to ask Bob, how about responding to those questions?
Mr. Tucker has very good questions there. The, obviously, the statutes allow us to charge for any, well, any application for zoning, or rezoning. So when Mr. Burleson came, he's responsible for paying the fee that you establish as Commissioners as part of that fee schedule that's adopted, along with the budget. So that's set at the beginning of the year, and we've changed it a little bit a couple of years ago, but that's pretty much been set in stone. Statutorily, we're allowed to charge as much as it costs us to do the business, so you kind of average that out, think about the neighbors. Of course, everyone's different. Some rezonings will have 10 adjoining properties, some will have 50, and some will have three. So it just depends on what that cost will be for all those letters to go out, and of course, obviously, putting up the sign and taking it down, that sort of thing, plus the preparation and the time that we spend. It varies widely across the state, what people charge for that, even what, I'm looking at Scott, because I know what the city of Locust charges versus what Norwood charges versus what the county charges, and so, so everyone has a different fee schedule. But that's established and built in initially. The other question is about time limits. It's a little complicated, but basically, if Mr. Burleson or someone wanted to reapply, now that's, let's face, if this had gone on through, y'all had denied it, okay, as a board tonight, and said, "Nope, can't happen." He can't come back next month and reapply. That's not allowed. He has to wait a year for that. If something substantially changes about the project, he can come back to the planning board in six months and ask them if it's, if what's changed was substantial enough for them to reconsider, and then they could vote on that, and then they could rehear it at their next meeting, and then it would come to you. So that's eight months, basically, if you do it that way. But they can't just keep coming back every time. There is no charge or fee or penalty, you might say, for withdrawing, and if someone does withdraw there, or put it, put it on hold, basically, it's like, almost like they've asked to table it, and so it's just, it is out in limbo. Mr. Burleson, if anything, could come back and ask the county clerk, I guess, you know, can we put this back on the agenda for our May meeting, or whatever, and then it would come up again. We would, at that point, as a planning staff, re-notify all the adjoining property owners, put the sign back up before that meeting. So that's the only kind of bad part about that, as you kind of alluded to, Mr. Tucker, is you could end up in that situation where you've got something out there hanging. Statutorily and through our ordinance at this point, there's nothing there that prevents that from happening. If someone has pulled it from an agenda, it could reappear at some point in the future.
Mr. Rimsburg.
What, you just said, if there was a substantial change, he could come back within that six months. What constitutes as a substantial change?
Well, that's, that's up to the planning board, if the change was substantial enough. In this case, I can't see that, and I don't know if I've got a good answer for you. If he came, let, I guess, let's say he decided, instead of doing single-family homes in there, he wanted to build apartments, come back as multifamily. Well, that's a different sort of case, a different type of rezoning, totally, and probably the planning board would say, "Yeah, bring us that proposal, and, you know, we may reject it, but you can bring it before us," because that's very different from a single-family zoning. Or maybe we want to incorporate half the property as commercial, we want to put a, you know, a strip shopping center as part of it, as well as, and then the back part of it would still be single-family. You know, that's a substantial change, so that's something like that would have to be out there for the planning board to first consider it, is it a change enough? And then they would say, if there's enough change, then they would consider it at the next meeting after announcing that that's going to be on their agenda. Good question.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker.
Aye.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. That was awesome.
I want to recognize Daniel McClellan. I hope I pronounced your name correctly. If I didn't, I apologize.
So I just wrote this down, where I wouldn't just ramble on, so I'll be pretty concise, I hope, with this. My name's Daniel McClellan. I'd like to take the opportunity to speak to the county commissioners about the planning and future of Stanley County. Within a year, the last year, two different pieces of property have been tried to be rezoned in this one area that we're talking about. I've lived in the area for 44 years, so, you know, I know the area pretty well, right there. Both were denied by the planning board, and then one was approved by the former makeup of the county commissioners. So, and what had happened was the designation for our area is agriculture open, which allows for 30,000 square foot a lot, so 30,000 square foot per lot. Now, there's water that runs out through there. With these lots, it is, with those lot sizes, it requires proper planning and setting of sites to have two. You've got to have a perk area for your septic tank and a, like a repair area, and have the proper soils, you know, to take care of that. Just because there's public water don't mean that you can stack houses on one another. Both, both these rezonings were asking for R20 designation, so they were wanting to cut it back down to 15,000 square foot a lot. That takes a whole lot of planning to be able to set two perks, you know, really two perk sites per lot. Of course, I have other issues with the rezonings, you know, the schools, crime and traffic, but my main concern was the septic systems on these small lots. I'm on a well with good drinking water, and many others are also, and I would hate to see those wells affected by the septic systems being placed there. That, you know, that may not work. I know they go by individual lot, if they perk, so Stanley County promotes the natural resources of the county, and I would like to keep the natural resources that we have in our corner of the county. You know, water is one of the most important, as far as drinking water. This leads me to the fact that the county is using a land use plan that was approved in 2001, and then revised in 2010. With these requests for rezonings in the smaller areas I live, it means that the plan needs to be updated. Every time that the county commissioners rezone a piece of property, they are making an amendment to the land use plan, and by making all these amendments to the land use plan, this makes the validity of the land use plan, or, you know, takes it into question after each one of these amendments. So you're changing what that original land use plan was every time you do a rezoning. So I'm asking the county commissioners to look into updating the land use plan, and also look at the, look at the future of the county, I mean, take into consideration the area. And when rezoning comes up in the future, think about the area and the effect it will have on the area in the future. And thanks again for allowing me to speak, and I appreciate what all y'all do for the county.
There's two other public comment speakers, Lee Snuggs and Pat Bramlett, but you're wanting to talk about litter and keeping our highways clean, so you want to wait?
We're on the agenda, I'm sorry.
Okay, that's okay. I just wanted to make sure. Is there anyone else from the River Road-Stanfield area that would like to speak that did not sign up? Come forward, young man, and tell us your name, and...
Hello.
Hey. I'm Josh Sales. I live beside Mr. Tucker. I do commercial landscaping, not used to public speaking, so articulate my thoughts is going to be kind of hard. What I want to talk about was future planning for the, for the county, like the gentleman before me spoke about. The biggest thing I'm looking for is, you know, we're really close to the Rocky River Basin, which leads to the PD, which leads to the oceans, so. McHenry County, Union County, our surrounding counties have things in order to make sure that we're filtering that water out before it leads to streams and the creeks, and affects the fish and wildlife. So what I'd ask for y'all is for future planning, to make sure you're not hitting an intersection, like where we live, so hard with the impact of wastewater, oils, greases from cars, stuff like that, going into our natural creeks and streams. So that's all I had, but permission, thank you.
Josh, would you give me your name, your last name?
Sales.
Sales, and your address, please.
4340 River Road.
43, I hope you're getting this, 40 River Road, Stanfield?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else?
My name's Sarah Hart, and I've lived on, at 4208 River Road my entire life. First off, may I present this position to y'all, to one of y'all? I would just like to say that I'm 27 years old, and I feel like a lot of people clump us millennials into that we, that we like this real urban, everybody crammed on each other, and I would like to stand up for us that are part of that group that does not like that. I want to raise my family on my family land, and I want to raise them the way I was raised, to be just a good old country girl that likes her space and likes her natural well water. That's just kind of, I just wanted to kind of prove that my generation wants to be raised the same way. All right? That's all I had to say. Thank y'all.
You would repeat your name one more time.
Sorry.
And your address.
Sarah Hart, and my address is 4208 River Road.
Stanfield?
Yes.
Got it. Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else that hadn't signed up? Okay, I don't see anyone, and I will let folks know that we're here for the zoning issue. You're more than welcome to stay to hear the rest of the items that we're going to talk about, but if you all would like to leave, I'm going to call a five-minute recess, and then we'll get back started, and if you'd like to leave, you're more than welcome to leave, but if you'd like to stay, we'd be happy to have you.
Is that, can I say something real quick? Can I say?
Yeah. Real quick, Peter, I've got your only timer.
I know. Just want to thank you guys for coming out and your concern. I appreciate the emails and everything else. I know I've heard from many of you guys, I think you send emails to every one of us, and even though y'all knew that this was on the agenda, I really appreciate you guys coming out. I know I went down there a couple times, and then once by myself and once with this Bob Rimsburg there, and there's a lot of traffic on that road. And then I'm all for growth, but when you get in a situation like that, I would rather have, you know, they're already going to build some more houses on, and instead of doing everything at one time, see how things go, see how traffic flows and stuff like that, but I just want to really thank you guys for coming out, even after this thing has been pulled off the agenda, and appreciate y'all's emails and stuff.
Ms. Sarah, did you want this hard copy back? Because it has some original signatures.
I just got those tonight, and the last two pages I just got tonight, I didn't get a chance to copy. The rest of it is copies.
You're in the break, if you want to come get those two, I'll have them right here for you now.
Thank you.
We're going to take a five-minute recess. Call the Board of Commissioners back to order, and if you're a commissioner lost, lost your seat, please return. The next agenda item is a public hearing, economic development incentive grant. Presenter is Candace Lauder, our EDC director. Candace?
Good evening, Chairman, members of the Board. Thank you for allowing me to come before you tonight on behalf of the EDC to request support for a property tax-based business development grant of 60% for five years for a business that is expanding its operations to manufacture automotive textiles in the city of Albemarle. This project will create approximately 18 jobs and will result in new taxable investments of at least $1.66 million in machinery and equipment over the next five years. I'll be happy to answer any questions you have about the project, and appreciate your consideration of this grant request.
Any questions of Candace? Seeing no questions, we need to hold a public hearing, so I will declare a public hearing open. Is there anyone here to speak for this tax incentive? Seeing none, is there anyone here to speak against this tax incentive? Seeing none, I close the public hearing. What's the pleasure of the Board with this tax incentive grant?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion made to approve by Commissioner Allman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Furr. Any other discussion? All in favor for approval of a 60% for five years with an investment of $1.66 million creating 18 new jobs, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 7-0.
Thank you.
The next item is the Consolidated Human Services Board appointments, and we have with us tonight Ms. Dolly Clayton. If you would, Dolly.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Evening.
I come to you to make a request that during the March 4th Consolidated Human Services Board meeting, we made recommendations for board appointments. As you're aware, two of the Human Services Board members, Michael Williams and TJ Smith, were appointed to the Planning and Zoning Board during the Commissioners' meeting on March 1st, making their resignation to the Health and Human Services Board effective immediately. So we have received an application from Diane Robinson, who is eligible and has agreed to serve the remaining term of one, one year, open consumer human services board member spot, and we have also received two applications for two of our vacant board positions, for the physician, as well as engineer, and those individuals are also eligible and willing to serve. Dr. Eric Johnson in the physician slot, and Mr. Wendell Dry, an engineer for the engineer slot. So I come to you today requesting that you approve the appointment of Diane Robinson to complete the unexpired term of one for the consumer of human service member board vacancy, as well as approve the appointment of Dr. Eric Johnson for the vacant physician member position for a four-year term, as well as approve the appointment of Mr. Wendell Dry for the vacant engineer member position for a four-year term.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'll make the motion of what she said.
Okay. We have a motion by Vice Chairman Jordan, second by Commissioner Effer. Any other questions of Dolly, or any questions about these appointments?
Just a quick question. There's, I don't see a resume or anything with Diane Robinson's application. Is there background on her or anything, or?
I believe that the, the application that you received provided that her, let's see. I thought it had her, it does not, you're correct, it does not have her information about her previous history on there, but the board discussed it at the board meeting.
Commissioner, I can, I know Diane personally. She and her husband run an investment office in downtown Albemarle.
And as a comment, I've been on that board for the last two years, so I'm, I was like, how can you not know Ms. Diane Robinson? But, right, oh, that one. But I would, I very sincerely thank Dr. Johnson and Mr. Dry, because since that board's been consolidated, we have had neither a doctor nor an engineer on that board, so that filled three out of the five slots that we needed, so it's the closest that board has been to being filled. And if anybody knows a psychiatrist, I'm just saying, if you use one.
Y'all have lost me. We've had a first and a second. We need to vote. All in favor of these appointments, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mike. Any opposed? Motion carries 7-0, and thank you, Dolly, for the presentation.
Thank you so much.
Okay, next item is, we're going to hear about some new voting equipment, and presenter is Kim Blackwelder, election director. Welcome, Kim.
Thank you. Good evening. My purpose here tonight is just to provide you with some information regarding the acquisition and adoption of voting equipment. In your packet, on pages 16 and 17, you have a resolution adopted by the Board of Elections at their March 2nd meeting, and this is the preliminary recommendation from the Board to acquire the voting system EVS 5.2.4.0. And just to give you a little information on what that... And just to give you a little information on what that means, on page 18 of your packet, I've outlined the steps required for adopting a new voting system and then given you some notes. So we currently use the Unity 3.4.1.1 system. This is used with the DS 200 precinct scanner and the AutoMark ballot marking device. The new voting system EVS 5240 is also compatible and will be used with the DS 200 precinct scanner and the AutoMark ballot marking device. So this, acquiring this system is basically a software upgrade. It doesn't require any new hardware. So we're looking at a total cost of, I think it's $3,600. It's on page 16. Yeah, $3,694. And that's to update the computer system that the software runs on. So we did have demonstrations of two voting systems, which is a requirement before you upgrade or acquire a new system. We did that on March 2nd, 2021. The second step is what I'm doing here tonight to give you the preliminary recommendation. And we will hold a simulated election on April the 6th, which we will go through. The voting equipment company will come in. We will test the new system on the equipment and make sure that we're satisfied with that. If we are, we'll apply for approval from the state. And then I will come back to you on April the 19th at that meeting and ask for your approval to acquire the voting system.
Any questions of Kim? Thank you, Kim.
Okay, thank you.
This is for information only. There's no vote needed for this tonight.
Is it not Dominion Equipment, right?
Yeah, that's not Dominion Equipment, is it?
It is not.
No, it is not. I thought you were asleep there for a minute, Micah. Okay, glad you're with us. Yeah. Okay, the next topic is Lee Snuggs, who was coming to talk with us about Keep Stanley Beautiful presentation. And Pat Bramlett is also here with a couple of other folks.
That's right. Thank you, Commissioner, for seeing us. Well, I know you're busy and appreciate your time. Also, I've got Pat Bramlett and Tom Medlin, he's a Realtor with Century 21, and Sandy Rogers. She's, I just found out tonight, she's been the treasurer of Keep Stanley Beautiful for 32 years since we started. So I think that might be a record somewhere. But, quick history, the Stanley County does give some money to Keep Stanley Beautiful yearly and we appreciate that. We've been applying that mostly for scholarship, but, and we just came here tonight to talk mostly about the problem I think most of you see is the litter problem. Not, we're not here to throw anybody on the bus or rant and rave. We know Todd and Tina and them at Solid Waste are overwhelmed. And I guess the gist of what we're here for is what can we do? Why can we help? Can we get help? We're just trying to, you know, just bring, put people's attention because I don't think we can count on DOT, not throwing them under the bus at all, but they've got their own troubles. I think they, they do have a, a big campaign going. I know recently they appropriated $500 million throughout the state, but I don't know how much of that actually gets to us. But we did want to talk some real quick details, you know, again, just bring it, highlight the problem. We, it's probably a three-phase problem that we see. Number one, we got to figure out a way to just pick up the trash. Now, the roads in the county are bigger, more dangerous roads than like the municipalities. We have teamed up with the city of Albemarle and doing, and doing an enhanced adopt a street program with them. We think that'll help locally, right around in the town, but these bigger county roads are going to be a little bit more of a challenge. The, the next problem is, of course, after getting the trash up, is how to keep it from coming back. And that's where a lot of this is maybe people's complacency, maybe a new accepted norm in our culture, which is something that we feel very strongly about, is something we need not accept. But then it goes right back to, there's a lot of this, and I'm guilty of a lot of times when I have a farm down in Norwood, stuff flows out of the back of my truck. I think a lot of this is, and I've seen these big trash trucks, I think Mr. Lucas is, I've heard Todd talking about, you were going to send letters to Waste Management in Republic about keeping those trucks covered, because I think that's a big problem. So some of it is not actual public neglect, but a lot of it is. So, but it still goes back to getting the trash up. So, again, I want to let other folks talk a little bit. I know Tom's very passionate about this. So we're, we're overwhelmed. We're a small group and again, it's, all we can do, we manage a small section of 2427, basically from McDonald's Blue Bay down to the Rock Creek overpass. And Tom and I were just talking, we were out there two Fridays ago and within 48 hours, it was almost back the way it was, you know, before we cleaned it. So we're, this has gotten a lot worse. I know the pandemic has a lot to do with it, but still, we feel like maybe an outreach program or something that the county can do, just to get the word out that this is not acceptable. This is maybe some, I know it's tough for law enforcement to catch litterers, but, and I know a lot of you probably remember as I do, the old, I don't know if they do it in schools anymore, the old litter campaigns. I remember the oldest ones from the 70s, I remember the Indian had the tear going down in the commercial, it's probably not socially acceptable to do that kind of thing anymore, but they even had to give a hoot, don't pollute. I don't know, there's things like, they're, they're kind of hokey, but I remember them. And I don't know if the kids are taught that anymore. But these are things that we, I think as a county, if we accept this type of, you know, this type of problem, it's a projection on us, a projection on our county. And I know it's not as, just as much like throwing money at something, but, you know, I know in government, you know, if you keep talking about it, maybe it'll eventually happen, but maybe we can hire somebody part-time, retire somebody, give them a truck and just, that's their job, is to go around and pick up the, you know, the worst roads in the county or something. But I know everybody's budgets are stretched, but just, you know, we're trying to figure out what we can do. And again, we come to you guys for guidance and if we can help, you know, in any way, we'll take suggestions as well. But I want others to speak and just kind of give their feedback.
There are two points that I want to make. One is economic development. When people come to your community, whether it's to enjoy the Mar Mountain or whatever they come for, they come here to look, the possibility of bringing a business here. They look at what the community looks like. And if Stanley County has litter all over it, I don't think we're making the kind of impression that we want to make. So I think that is a very important thing. The appearance of our county matters. The other thing I want to say is Chris and I have been picking up litter for years. The area that they were talking about that we did two Fridays ago, we were down there Saturday again, picking up. It's, it's just, it's very discouraging. And we need more people to take an interest in their own neighborhood, in the county as a whole. We, we've just got to have more people who take a personal interest, who commit whatever amount of time they can give to get out and help with this problem. And maybe, I don't know that the Disney effect will work here or not, but if you don't see litter, maybe you won't throw it out. So we've just got to make our, the appearance of our county better and do what we can as individuals, each one of us. Thank you very much.
Let's go. No. Okay. Y'all doing a good job.
My name is Tom Medlin. I'm a city of Albemarle resident. I've been picking up litter all my life. As Lee alluded to, we have a major problem in the county. We have a major problem in the city, the county, the state, and the nation. We are living in a time when people seem to be oblivious to the fact that litter's all around us. Today, I was at the YMCA in Albemarle in that little area, that rectangle you can walk, and there was a lot of trash being completely ignored by folks. That is troubling to me that, you know, this group won't be around many more years, but it's troubling to think that most of the people living today have become so complacent to litter, it's not even recognizable, it's not on their radar at all. And in the day and age we live now, to me, I think cameras in certain locations would be a major deterrent. And the acknowledgement by signage that there are cameras in place in hotspots where people throw their trash in the county, roadsides, you know, let them know that there is something in place that might be a deterrent for them to, you know, at least think twice before throwing trash down. There's no signage that I know of in the county anywhere addressing fines or addressing the fact that littering is wrong. We, we need signage to that effect. And Pat and I were talking a moment ago, if you think about all the county vehicles that run up and down the roads and the streets, bumper stickers or stickers or signage on the side of the vehicle that says litter, you know, or something like, every, every litter bit hurts, be responsible. If you just had something there to bring it to the forefront of people's minds and keep it, you know, on their radar, I think that would help. But currently, there's no staying, so there's no acknowledgement that we are, we're going to be concerned about litter. So as long as we're not concerned about it, people keep throwing it out each and every day, every week. So I think we're all frustrated, we just need to find some ways to prevent it. And I think in this day and age of technology, cameras are cheap. I think the county needs to invest in some cameras and some signage as a deterrent to littering. Thank you.
And just to conclude, I think if we had a couple hundred more people like Pat and Tom, I mean, Pat and Chris, they're out there regularly. You know, if you, if you go by Rock Creek Park, you know, you'll catch them on, probably about once a week out there picking up trash. So they're, they're, they do their part. So again, we're, we're here, we're out there doing what we can, but please guide us, let we know, let us know what we can do or maybe we team up or we're just, we're reaching out for whatever assistance we can get and/or give. So thank you for your time.
Can I make one more quick comment to Peter? You're a runner. You're an outdoor guy. Where I live on Montgomery Avenue, I see a lot of running events. And I know that's running in terms of an event, but there are a lot of people that walk for exercise that could carry a grabber. You know what I mean by a grabber? That you can reach, bend over and pick up litter? I've often wondered why people don't take one with them when they're exercising. If we could do something as a county to promote that or encourage that, I think that would be a good thing. I take one with me. I've got one in the car all the time. We just need to make some sort of impact on the individual.
Yeah, that's a, I've noticed some chatter on Facebook where there's a group, one of the Stanley County groups that haven't, they've been talking about the litter thing. I'll try to get who it is and contact it with stuff like that. And one comment about runners, if I could share, we had that fellowship of the Idiot Run, we had the runners from out of town. And you don't know where people's thought process is. So, you know, they come back through, down the mountain, they cross Valley Drive and run up Morel Mountain Road. And we had an aid station there where they gave them the goos and stuff. So one runner, not wanting to litter, he stops and puts the empty gel that he just ate inside a mailbox along the way.
Oh, gosh.
And it happened to be the mailbox of the guy who fixes my vacuum cleaners. And he came into work with that gel. And I'm glad it was him because I was able to straighten it out, but it's like, you know, you don't know where people's thought processes are sometimes, you know? So I'll work with you on this because like I said, I started to see some chatter about people just trying to do it. If we can hook them up with a coordinated effort, I think it would be good.
Definitely, just, I know the city just recently sent out something, one of the flyers in their bills about us and, and I've already gotten probably four or five emails from people volunteering. So if you just put the word out, any kind of way to get the word out to the public that we're out there and could use some help, I think people, I think people do want to help, they just know what to do. But I encourage you, if, if one area, if you want to ride, go from Rock Creek, just from Rock Creek, if you'll drive slowly up to the nursing home and just look on both sides, there, even under the welcome to Albemarle sign, and I've left there purposely, it's been there for at least three or four months. There's a big, huge piece of white insulation, probably as big as that table, that's been under the welcome Albemarle sign for months. But that just, that area is terrible.
All the way to Norwood.
Yeah. So just, again, I think people are becoming oblivious to it, but it's out there and it's getting worse. So again, we're, we're, we'll give and accept any help we can, we can give or get.
Any questions of Mr. Snuggs?
I have decided to say something. I'm the treasurer of the Keeps Stanley Beautiful and I'd like to thank you for the money that you give us every year. You give us $1,000 a year and we have a very small amount in our treasury, less than $4,000, but that helps us do a lot of things. And we welcome any ideas and any ways to spend money and also to spread the word a little bit better, get it into people's heads that we need to clean up our county a little bit better than what we've been doing. Thank you.
Any questions of any of these folks?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
What was the email that you said that you've been getting email from people?
Yes, sir.
Can you put that on record so if anyone wants to contact you?
Sure. I'm with Lee, I'm Lee Snuggs. I'm, y'all probably seen me before, I'm actually the director for the Rock River RPO, but this is another hat I wear. It's Lee Snuggs and my email address personally is leesnuggs, that's L-E-S-N-U-G-G-S-22@gmail.com and it's Keep Stanley Beautiful. And we, again, we're, we try to do all of Stanley County, but it's quite a task. So if anybody wants to volunteer, we'll, we'll accept any help. And we meet monthly, second Monday of every month, usually right here at the partnership room, you know, after, hopefully when COVID breaks, we go back to meeting for lunch, but 12 to 1 right here in the partnership conference room. And we do maintain the section of 2427 regularly and we try to publicize that as well.
Thank you. I was just wanting to get that on record. So if anybody was listening and would say, hey, ding, you know.
And I'll put my phone number out there too. Phone number 704-512-8163.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Snuggs?
Yes, sir.
I have a couple of questions.
Certainly.
The signs that says adopt highway cleanup signs.
Right.
Do we have a list? Here's, here's the thought. Do you have a list of people that have, people or organizations that have said, hey, we want this section of highway?
DOT has, and I found that, I worked for DOT for many years, I never worked with them in this capacity as far as adopt a highway, adopt a highway, adopt a road, but they are a little tight. I haven't been able to find anybody that has or will give out that information. The city does have an adopt a street program, I think it's even more easily accessible, but as far as the bigger state roads and county roads, I've not been able to find that data as far as who, or I know you can sign up for one, but you know, going in and contacting those people when that's not, when they're not policing their area is a little bit of a challenge. But I do work close with DOT a lot and I am still pressing the question because.
Probably somebody has control over that.
Yeah. It would be nice to know that way. You just call them, say, hey, you know, you don't, you know, your section of road's pretty dirty, it's probably time to, because I think sometimes people just forget, or maybe new leadership comes on and they don't really, one of the schools, for example, here in Albemarle, they had a Leonard Drive, Leonard right over here and we contacted them. The school, I think it was a middle school, they didn't even know they had the street. They didn't know that, you know, their name's on the sign out there, they didn't, they didn't know that was their responsibility. So sometimes I think it's just overlooked.
Well, and I worked with an organization that was looking at getting into that, that just happened to coincidentally have brought that subject up about just getting to adopt a highway mile. And the program is free, you're required to commit, I think, four times a year is what, you know, what they ask you.
Right.
You know, what, what I would love to see, the problem you're going to run into with this, and I know the problem before I say it, like Highway 73, I didn't notice it as much until I started riding a motorcycle. Now, now I see everything because I'm constantly looking for where I'm going to ditch that bike in case somebody decides to hit me. So I do notice, oh, not there. And it is bad on 73, it's bad on some of these backroads. And, you know, maybe with the climate getting like it is, the weather getting like it is, someone like Peter who's used to organizing events, I'm not volunteering you, I'm just tossing the idea out there and I'd be glad to help too. You know, we got a lot of people that like to walk, like to exercise. If you have enough of them together where it's a safe thing and we do a, it's not a, it's not a run, it's a walk. You just, hey, we're going to do this four miles of 73 today, head toward Mount Pleasant. Hey, we're going to do this bit of Middlingport or Austin, you know, and make it a community thing.
Litter fun.
Because you, you won't get.
Who said that? Litter fun.
You know, and there's a lot of groups in the county, I think, will participate of a lot of ages, you know? I mean, I'd be glad to be a part of that, but the, I'd love to see some enforcement picked up. And the downside of that is if you want it done on 73, that's going to be state highway patrol.
Right.
Because sheriff's department takes on backroads. And if you want backroads, of course, that's the sheriff's department. But, you know, it couldn't hurt to reach out to Sheriff Crisco or our local state highway patrol, you know, commanding officer and say, hey, look, could you guys step up the tickets for it? Because a lot of it is just laziness. I mean, people throwing it out. And if you ride a motorcycle, you know, it's, what ones they are because it hits you.
Yeah.
So it's just, the county probably can't do much to out, to out or to stop. So it's just, the county probably can't do much to out, to out or to stop what thousands of people are doing, but as a community, as people, we probably could.
Yeah, just get the word out, and I think that's the biggest thing. So, but thank you.
Second question.
Yes, sir.
I know, hadn't been years ago, not too long ago, there used to be prisoners that would pick up trash.
And I did contact the prison, I don't know if it's prison-wide, but I didn't talk to the warden, but I talked to administrative assistant. She talked with him and called, she did call me back and said, they don't do that program anymore. Reason why, I don't know, but it would be nice. I'm sorry?
It's considered forced labor.
Is it? So...
You can't inconvenience prisoners.
Yeah. So, yeah, we've looked at that as well, and, but we do have, I'm working with Abby Smith, she's with the judicial system, there are people out there who pull community service hours, and we have gotten in that system where, and we do have one gentleman who owes us 80 hours, and he's going, we've already got some streets picked out for them, so we're trying to incorporate that kind of help as well. If we just had somebody regular out there, dress some, because it's not all over, but it's just, you know, 52 right through town here is really bad, there's some streets that are constantly, you know, needing attention. If we just keep an eye on those things, that would definitely be a help. But yes, I mean, we're, we're looking at all avenues that we can and just trying to get the word out as much as possible. So any publications, you know, I was sitting around trying to think, how do you talk to the, you know, all of Stanley County? It's not easy, but any, you know, any avenue we can have to do that, we're, we'll, you know, be happy to use, so.
Personally, I would love to see some signs, litter signs with fines on them, but my concern is those type crimes, the way the court system is now, they'd probably just throw it out.
Yeah.
I hate to say it.
Cameras, cameras should make a difference because a camera's not going to lie about who you saw doing that.
Well, we've even thought about trying to get one of those, I know Chief Doolin here in Alamo has one of those trailer-pulled little flip-ups, flashing signs, whatever, we even thought about just getting one and travel around different places, different roads, and say, you know, clean up your street, or just clean up your property. If everybody just cleaned up their own property, that would be, make a big difference, or just something like that. But DOT has, like I said, has allocated either 500 million, what's going to be more enforcement, but like you said, just, you know, enforcement's not everything, so, but we are, we're doing what we can. But, thank you.
Thank you. Who come up with the word litterthon? Was that Tom?
Tom.
I just Googled it. No one's used that yet.
Might need to copyright that.
I think I'm going to have a litterthon, I'll give you credit for it around Earth Day and get runners to...
Thank you.
We'll be there.
We'll be there.
One quick comment, Nicole Austin at the Highway Engineering Office, if you want to know who's adopting a highway, certainly the county, state highways, she would be a good contact. I've got her phone number if you want it. It's 704-983-4360.
Allard, did you get that? And what's her name, Tom?
Nicole Austin.
She has the list of Adopt a Highway.
She's got a direct link to getting things accomplished with Adopt a Highway.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is Board of Adjustment Appointment, Bailey Emrich.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you for having me. I just have one thing to present tonight. As you know, Mr. Tim Fesperman was recently appointed to the planning board, and he was previously on the Board of Adjustment, so now that position as an alternate is open for his unexpired term, which would end in 2023. The Board of Adjustment is a seven-member board, and they do have two alternates. Mr. Fesperman was in the alternate position, so please consider those who have volunteered and appoint one person for this unexpired term. It is helpful, but not required, that the appointee does have some sort of background in property management, surveying, legal processes, et cetera. The Board of Adjustment rules on barriages, special use permits, appeals, and other related items, usually in a quasi-judicial evidentiary hearing. The work is somewhat technical, and the board sits as both judge and jury in these cases. Any appeals of the actions of the board are to the Superior Court. To be awarded a variance case must be approved by a four-fifths vote on the board following findings of fact. Because members may be absent or need to recuse themselves, it is important to have alternate members available to replace regular members unable to hear a particular case. I believe before you, the two volunteer applications are Mr. Michael Fleming and Ms. Emma Moore. The current, and I will read the current members of the board, Michael Efferd, Billy Franklin Lee, Devon Fur, Richard Cosgrove, Brenda Farmer, Cynthia Fish, David Doolin, and the one alternate we do have currently is Shannon Maynard. That is all I have.
Okay. Any questions of Bailey? Don't believe there's any questions.
Can I make a motion that we appoint Michael Fleming?
You sure can. Motion to appoint Michael Fleming, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Allman, second. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries, 7-0.
Just coming, I mentioned something here. One thing I like about it when people, when people apply for boards, it would be helpful if they put their backgrounds on here and stuff, because this guy is a licensed architect and stuff like that, which fits along in this position. So many of those out there that apply for positions, they don't put anything down except they want to be in the position. It would helpful is if, if you want to apply for a board, please put something about your background on the paper.
Well, taken, thank you. North Carolina Housing Finance Agency, Single Family Rehab Grant, County Manager Andy Lucas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The county has received a $190,000 Single Family Rehab Grant from the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency, and the board just needs to recognize these funds so that we can begin to initiate program activities. This grant will allow us to rehabilitate about five homes for low-income and disabled folks. So the item before you this evening is to consider and approve the associated budget amendment and the project ordinance for the single-family rehab, and we will be bringing forward another housing grant. We actually received $750,000 from the Department of Commerce back in, gosh, November, December, but we're just getting information on that. So you will be seeing another budget amendment and project ordinance for that specific community development block grant coming in the next month or so. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Make a motion to approve the associated budget amendment and project ordinance for the ESFR grant.
First, Commissioner Raeford. Second, Commissioner Allman. Any other discussion? My only statement would be, I would hope that we will try to get local contractors to do this work.
Yeah, we'll bid everything, and it'll be in the paper, and we'll try to do our best. And a lot of contractors just don't bid on this, our local folks, because they can make way more money doing non-county rehabilitation work. I mean, it's, it's not, it's not great ideal work, and there's not much profit margin.
Somebody's making some profit.
Hmm, they're not making a whole lot, but yes, yeah.
Let's see if we can get Stanley County folks.
Yeah, well, it'll be in the paper, so if they want it, they can, they're more than welcome to put a bid in.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none. All in favor of this $190,000 Single Family Rehab Grant, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, 7-0. Okay, let's see. County Manager Lucas, L-M-E-M-C-O, Disengagement and Realignment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and board members. The local management entity, managed care organization, disengagement and realignment. As you will recall, back in November, the previous board took action to begin the process of disengagement from Cardinal Innovations. Cabarrus and Union have also taken that same action, as well as Mecklenburg, Forsyth, and Orange County that are part of Cardinal's current footprint. To my knowledge, the only counties that have submitted their formal packet for consideration to the Secretary of the Department of Health and Human Services are Union County and Cabarrus, and they did that a couple weeks ago. We were two or three weeks behind them in terms of our, when we initiated our disengagement process. We've met and actually exceeded the required 60-day comment period, and we've also posted those comments for a 30-day period, and then we're ready to move forward with submitting our disengagement documentation to the Secretary of the Department of Health and Human Services for her review and consideration. There's several items you'll need to take action on this evening prior to allow staff to submit the disengagement documentation to the secretary. Those include our disengagement plan, our continuity of services plan, an authorizing resolution, disengagement financial liabilities report, and a distribution of real property plan, which is really not relevant for Stanley County because we don't, Cardinal doesn't have any real property here that we're involved with. So enclosed, I also included public comments and other applicable documents, so you could review, you know, parts of our submission to the Department of Health and Human Services. So I'm asking the board to consider and approve the authorizing resolution, the disengagement plan, the disengagement financial liabilities report, real property distribution plan, and the continuity of services plan, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for County Manager Lucas?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the authorizing resolution, disengagement plan, disengagement financial liabilities report, and real property distribution plan, and continuity of service plan.
Motion by Commissioner Allman, and second by Vice Chairman Jordan. Any other questions, discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, 7-0. I have appointment, and I'm going to recognize Andy Lucas, County Manager.
Yes, thank you. Last item on the regular agenda this evening is the Transportation Advisory Board, serves as a liaison board for residents of Stanley County concerning our SCUSA, which is our Stanley County Umbrella Services Agency. And typically, the veteran service officer, Rod Barbie, and the senior services director, Becky Wimhoff, have served on that, on that Transportation Advisory Board tab, just because of their role and who they work with, and a lot of times they'll refer clients to use our transportation. Both Rod and Becky are going to be retiring in the next couple months, and so what Randy is seeking is that we appoint that, that position, not necessarily the individual. So if we have additional turnover moving forward, or, I mean, when we hire those folks, they'll immediately become a member of the tab, so it doesn't, we don't have to come back to you two and three times with whoever the new veteran service officer is or the new senior services director is to be appointed to this board, that you would just appoint those positions this evening, and that those positions would serve on that board moving forward. So that's the, that's the request from our Transportation Director, Randy Schenk.
Any questions? Hearing none, what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the proposed recommendation.
First by Commissioner Allman, and second by Vice Chairman Jordan. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, 7-0. Brings us to the consent agenda, and I think all the commissioners that have had a chance to review the consent agenda, is there any items that need to be pulled out of the consent agenda for discussion? If not, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Approve, Mr. Chairman.
Good, Commissioner Raeford, motion to approve.
Second.
Second. Vice Chairman Jordan, any discussion? All in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, 7-0. Which brings us to board comments, and Commissioner Ashudo, I'm going to start with you.
Okay, two quick things. Good news in Stanley County, it looks like the numbers for COVID have been going down. However, I just want people to be careful because it's been like a roller coaster. If y'all watch the news you see over in Duke where they've had all these students went to frat parties, and now they have to quarantine with 6,000 students because they had probably 200 or so students get COVID, this was just this week, and the virus doesn't know borders. And over in Italy, they're getting ready to do another lockdown in Italy until Christmas, and then in Germany, they're getting ready to do a lockdown. So be careful out there, and, you know, a good friend of mine is, I heard right before the meeting, that he's close to being put on a ventilator, so keep him in your prayers. And then the second thing, you know, they talked about the, there's a bill trying to go through the state to allow some counties not to, not to use newspapers for public notices, the public notice thing. And the importance of public notices, to me, is not about the money, it's about the transparency. A lot of folks were here tonight because somebody at some point heard about it, they either saw a sign or they saw a public notice in the newspaper that made them aware of what's going on, and for transparency reasons, I hope that bill in Raleigh does not pass.
Thank you, Commissioner Raeford.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, I got two things. I serve on the Airport Authority Board, and one of the things is the Stanley County Airport, the air traffic control tower has some new hours, effective Sunday, March 28th, they will be going seven days a week from 8:00 a.m. till 5:30 p.m., and they're averaging over 1,100 flights a month out there, so that's good news for the guard and the air traffic control portion of that. And then the second thing I have, Mr. Chairman, is I'd like to recognize the Airport Director, Ken Swearingen. Ken was actually the first person in the state to complete an aviation professional course in this North Carolina Airport Professional. He attended courses in the North Carolina Airtap Aviation Leadership and Management Program, and I just want to let you know that he is the first one in the state to complete that, and congratulations to Ken and all the folks out at the airport. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Raeford. Commissioner Fur. Commissioner Allman.
Just like to thank all the folks from Stanfield that came out this evening, and also the folks who came from Keeps Stanley Beautiful. I've had, me and my grandpa adopted our road years and years ago, and, not lying. It sits that time, we've picked up someone dumped out of a washing machine one night, and just loads of beer cans and things of that nature, but every little bit helps, and I like that idea Peter came up with, so let me know if I can do anything to help.
Thank you. Vice Chairman Jordan.
Not a lot for me tonight. I do want to say thanks to people that took the time out to come and share your comments. I'd like for other people to see that they are welcome. We may not always agree with them, but if we don't hear them and we don't know them, then we have to make our decisions without that input. So I always encourage people to do that. The first thing I ever did in politics was stand before this board, like that young guy earlier that was kind of shaken, didn't know what to say, and I came up here with a whole list of questions to ask the commissioners, because nobody told me you're not supposed to ask commissioners questions. And so my whole script went right out the window. Nobody answered, but, you know, it, you know, it takes a lot to come up here sometimes, you know, if you're new to it, but we try to be friendly. So, you know, if you've got something that needs to be said or that you think is worth sharing, come on up, and be heard. That's it.
Thank you. County Manager Lucas, do you have anything? Okay. And I'm going to put a plug in for an upcoming event that is held by one of our commissioners and his wife in honor of their daughter, Carrie, who passed away from cystic fibrosis, I think is correct. On, and you correct me, on April the 20th, is it 24?
24, sure.
It's going to be a motorcycle ride and a barbecue that is in her honor, but it also is a time to raise scholarship funds. Scott and Tracy have been doing this, how many years? 23?
Twenty-six.
Okay, 22 years. So if you ride a motorcycle, come out to West Stanley on the 25th, 24, sorry, it'd be a day late.
You can come on the 25th.
You can come on the 25th, but then there won't be anybody there. But come, come out, bring your motorcycle if you have one, and go on this ride in honor of Carrie. and go on this ride in honor of Carrie, Carrie Pooh. And let's raise some scholarship dollars. And I know Scott and Tracy, I think they've reached over $100,000 in scholarships given to West Stanley students. It's a great event. The motorcycle ride will be over with, probably, they'll be back, what, about 1:30, 2 o'clock? If you don't ride a motorcycle, there's going to be barbecue out there. So come out and eat some barbecue and leave a donation for the foundation. I think that's a great event that y'all have been putting on for a number of years. And if you like beach music, John Hall of, is it Riptide Radio? Is going to be there DJing. And all the folks that love beach music that listen to Riptide Radio on the internet know who John Hall is. So he advertised for you all yesterday and did a great job. So please come out, support this event, very important. And that's all I have. Yes, sir.
Commissioner Efferd, I know it's on Facebook, it has a group or a page name, I can't remember, but the ride, can you tell people how to find it?
It's the Carrie D. Efferd Memorial Scholarship Bike Run. And Mr. Fur down there has been leading this for 22 years, I guess. But, yeah, you can, and there's a website, carriepoo.com. That's K-E-R-R-I-P-O-O-H.com.
There we go. And I can attest, I think somebody won like a 300, 75-dollar Harley jacket last time I went. And talk about now prizes that are cool. Another guy won like 18 tons of gravel, which I would have killed for. It's a perfect prize that I didn't get that one. But I thought, thank you for doing that. I've ridden it for two years now, and I look forward to it every year. It's a great ride, it's a great experience. And even if you don't ride, come out and join the fundraiser. Get you, get you some food, it's a great, it's a great event.
And if anyone wants to loan me a motorcycle, I'll get my license and ride with you. If not, I'll just be out there.
All Paul's got a sidecar.
Mr. Chairman. I'll let you ride on the back with me.
All right, I appreciate that, Commissioner Fur. All right, no other business, I need a motion. Oh, Mr. Barbie, yeah, I'm sorry, I forgot about you. You're so short tonight.
For the Keeps Stanley Clean Community. And I've noticed myself, I know that this COVID thing has shut most of the restaurants and fast food places down except for carryout. And I've noticed myself that there's no waste cans out there. People still are carrying it home or usually not tossing alongside the road on the way out. So I think that'd be something we need to bring up, too. But appreciate everybody, thanks a lot.
Thank you, Mike. No other business, I need a motion to adjourn. Need second. Peter, second, all in favor? Aye, motion.